Good afternoon. So this is the third segment of the May 6. Urban Geography. Class for May Master at Tennessee State University. So today, I'm gonna share my screen, or now. We are going to engage in a working session. On the individual term paper, so we really need to be alert for this. We will have a follow-up working session. Next week, I just want to make sure that everything is there. That we need to do this today. So this is the individual term paper, let me see, I'm just in edit, I mean. See, okay, everything's there, alright, so. Let me go to student view. Okay, so. You probably will want to follow along with me today, just so that we can at least get you past the techn- technological challenges. That you might face, or watch the recording later, if you were kind of burned out on this today, in the third hour. Okay, so. So here's the individual term paper assignment. And like I said, I'm gonna try to walk you through as much of the technical part of this as I can. So you have the. Term paper itself, I mean, the term paper instructions itself, and so we will. Open that up. And so if you haven't done so already. You should set up a public account. For ArcGIS Online, not the free trial. But the public account, so this should be your own free public account. So that's, that's what you should be doing now, if you haven't already done it, do it later, just. You don't, really, you don't, you don't have to do that, you don't have to do that right now, but you have to. The most important thing is, is we're gonna start to populate. The. The attribute data table for your map. And so in order to do that. Well. Actually, the first step that we did, we've already done the first step, and that's to rank the cities, so I'll put everybody's rankings here. In this. I think we have everybody's rankings and cities here. I think we're missing, yeah, I think there's one person. I don't know, I have to figure that out. But here are your cities, here are your rankings, and so you can just go right from there and just rank your city. Right down, well, actually. Yeah, rank your cities here. From. Most vulnerable to least vulnerable, so that's already right there for you. Here's the, here are the rankings that you decided upon, you can just write that right into the Word document there. Okay, so the next thing that we're gonna do is. Assess the vulnerability to COVID-19 based upon a series of variables, okay? Right now, the first ranking we did, I just said, just off the top of your head, very unscientifically, just tell me what you think of the. Most to least vulnerable cities, not based upon any data, so what we're gonna do next is we're going to. Compile a database. Pull that database into a map, and then you're going to engage in a. In a geographic assessment of your map data. And then you're going to re-rank your cities. Based upon. Your findings and your maps, so you're gonna have an unscientific ranking, and then you're gonna have a scientific ranking. So. But the first thing that we have to do is populate this data table, so I'm gonna walk you through most of this today. You should perhaps go. And download this database, whoops, the database is this Excel spreadsheet, it looks like this. And so you, I will. So we're just going to do, I'm just gonna do one sample city, so you should do this for all four of your cities. But I'm just gonna do one city, to see what city. See, Baltimore, Pittsburgh. Think somebody has, oh, I know, we didn't, I know a city that we didn't have. So I'm just gonna use Indianapolis, Indiana as an example, so just try to follow along or watch the recording later. Okay, so that's our first field. Is just the name of the city, Field A, it's the name of the city, now city population, okay, let me just say this. I'm sure I probably don't have to say this for this class. But do not Google anything, okay, we're not doing Google, okay, everybody thinks that. Google is the soap, you know, the soap is a source of all knowledge. No, because what's gonna happen, let's say in a couple of weeks, when you're presenting. Well, maybe not this, let's say if I invited, which was, I usually invite the whole world. To watch your final paper presentations, you know, I make it public, everybody comes in, we got Zoom bombed at one point last year, but most, for the most part, it went well. Even though that sounds very intimidating, you might think, I don't want to be presenting in front of everybody. There are people in there who might be able to offer you an internship on the spot. Wow, this is just. And I've had, last year, I had three different. Entities. Offer students jobs on the spot after they did their presentations during, for the class, so don't think this is the way of me putting you out there. Gare you, it's to open up opportunities for you. So, and so if in that, if, in that instance, if someone was to ask you, well. Where did you get your population data, you can't, as an educated person, say, well, I Googled it, you can't do that, you can't. Also, we're not gonna do this, but I guarantee you that if I was to ask you to Google the populate, just Google the population of Indianapolis, Indiana. How many people are in here, 12 people, we probably have 12 different answers. Do this, so we're gonna use the. A proper research methodology. To get our data, so notice that all of your, your fields have specific data sources, so you don't have to look around. You know, I give you the sources right here, all I'm gonna do is walk you through how to get the data out of the sources, so the first source. Is the Census site, so we're gonna go to census.gov. And census.gov, there it is, boom. So watch carefully. Okay. Go to Explore Data, I'll give you a second to get to the Census site, I'll give you a second. To get to the Census site.
Census.
Yeah, census.gov, census, C-E-N-S-U-S dot gov. Go to the Census site. And. Then when you get there. You can. I'll show you how to get the data.
Search? Maybe not.
Oh, to go to Explore Data, okay, go to Explore, whoops, go to Explore Data main, click on. Then you'll want to scroll down. Till you get to Quick Facts, okay? Go to Quick Facts. There you go, now, now you're at Quick Facts, now all you have to do. Is type in the name of your city, or a city, one of your cities, or all of them eventually. Indianapolis, Indianapolis. Indiana, click there and notice right away you get. The population of the city, see that 876,000, I don't use the number. For the entire United States, that's 328 million, we just want Indianapolis, so it's 876. 384, for me, you did, see, 876.
Can I ask the question?
Yes.
So when the Census does population, do they like include like newborns, like that were just like born today? Or do they do like a certain age or what?
Yeah, I mean, presumably, when people fill out the census form, they're supposed to report everybody in the household. You know, now, of course, if somebody's born after the census form is turned in, that individual's gonna be missed, but. It's not, it's not an exact science, I mean, in fact, there's something called the undercount. So people of color are often undercounted in the census for a variety of reasons, and that's why we often have recounts. Because the way that we, that cities get funding for. Anything from the federal government is based upon the number of people in the city, obviously. So if a city's asking for money for schools, they need an accurate count of the school age population. If they're asking for money for housing, they need an accurate count of the population, to get an idea of how much money they should get from the federal government. From HUD, from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for housing, and so on and so forth, so the census is very important. And it's very important that we get as close as we can to the inaccurate count. Yes, Mackenzie?
Yes, so when I look at my city, Austin, Texas, the most recent is 2019, July 1st.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, if you notice, I think even from, even though this is a. A census year, there are, notice this says population estimate, so yeah, so there are counts taken. Pretty, pretty much every year, so in most cases, so yeah, you're not gonna get 2020 numbers yet, they're. The 2020 census numbers probably won't be released until the fall of this year, perhaps, and that's because of COVID-19, of course, delaying. The collection of the census data. Okay, so you've got your. Population, next, population density, you can just stay on that same page, scroll all the way to the bottom. And so your population is, population density is a number of people per square mile. And so here is your population density for Indianapolis, it's, for me, it's 2,270 people per square mile. 2,270 people per square mile. Okay, let's just take a pause right here, just for, why are we, why in terms of vulnerability to COVID? Why is population density a variable that we would, a variable of interest for us?
Well, because it's an airborne virus, so that means if it's more populated, then that can be the quicker and the more it can spread.
Yeah, if you have people in closer proximity to each other, then the more it can spread, but interestingly enough. Another variable that's even a greater. Predictor of vulnerability to COVID-19 is not just population density, but the number of people per household. Average number of people per household, because if you are in a place where you have multiple generations of people living in a household. It's almost impossible to social distance, and so in those cases, the disease was transmitted amongst people in households, and that's where you find, found a lot of those hotspots. Let's see, I don't know if, I guess you could, oh, yeah, well, that is, so speaking of that, I'm just kind of looking ahead, notice that. Now, when I first created this assignment last year, that was before that. That information was out, that the number of people per household was a strong predictor, so you notice here. At the end, you have two variables of your choice, so you get to choose your own variable from somewhere, of course, you need to have a source, a source cannot be Google. So that could be a variable, and that's that, that meaning the number of people per household is right here under housing. Here it is, family and living arrangements, persons per household, and in this case is 2.51. So that might be a variable that you might add to this as your own, that will be an even stronger indicator of. Of vulnerability to COVID-19. Okay, so we've got the population, population density, now we've got latitude and longitude, this is the data that we'll use to. Pin. Our city to a map. Or the map, so let me show you how to do that, I think I've showed you already. Again, now that says, notice, notice it says Google Maps, not Google. So. What you'll do is go to. Google, but then go to Google Maps here. And. Go to Google Maps. Then just navigate to your city. And then in your city, just find a recognizable landmark, you know, a landmark that. You. Can identify, not just any random location, so I'm in Indianapolis, I'm gonna use Indianapolis Speedway as my lat-long point. Just drop a pin like that, and you notice that. You should see the latitude and longitude. Here, now, if for whatever reason. That doesn't work, if you look up in the search bar, you'll notice you have a latitude and longitude there also. If that pin drop doesn't work. It's not the same lat-long, but I just want you to get a latitude and longitude that corresponds to your city. Once you get that number. You can then. Put the latitude and longitude into your spreadsheet, and listening carefully at this point, first of all. You do not want to round off these numbers, okay, so latitude, latitude is arc angle distance north and south of the equator measured in degrees. Each degree of latitude is about 69 miles, so each space behind the decimal. Is. Represents a fraction of 69 miles, so we have, in this case, tenths, hundreds, thousands, ten thousands, hundreds, millions. A millionth of 69 miles is about four inches, okay, so we can get down to a four-inch level of accuracy. Now for longitude in the Western Hemisphere. That number is negative, it's just like being on the left-hand side of the. Y-axis on an arithmetic grid, the numbers are negative, so. And again, so you just put that number in, and in your case, you'll be doing this for four cities, I'm just gonna walk you through, I gotta do it for one. And so there, see, there's a question in the chat. Jeez. Am I back, am I back? Hello?
Yes.
You're here.
Okay, I'm back, okay. Comcast, alright, so did you all see how I got latitude and longitude, or do I need to do that again?
No, sorry.
Alright, okay, good. Okay, so that's latitude, longitude. Excuse me, someone say something? Do I need to do it again? No, okay.
Oh, yeah, I just said it, yes.
Oh, everybody's okay, we're okay?
I was just wondering, like, I might have missed this, why'd you pick the Speedway area?
Just because it's a recognizable landmark, and in the case that something goes wrong in translation at some point. And that point ends up somewhere where it doesn't belong, and that happens, you know, you transpose numbers. Then you'll at least know where that point should have been. Yeah, so, so that's why it's best to have some recognizable landmark in the city, instead of just picking some random point. And then. You know, you wind up with a point that's not where it belongs, and you can't put it where it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next, population over 65, back to the census. Let's see. So person, 65 years and over. Percent, and so we have 12.2%. Oh, it's percent of, oh, very important, don't put anything in a, whoa, 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 no, 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 don't put anything in a cell. Like symbols or anything like that. You just wanted to be clean. It's strange. Let's see, that's somewhere, okay. Yeah, so you should just have, have, there's 12, I think I had 12. 12.2, okay. So 12.2% over 65, and I don't think, I think we might have to do a little bit of math to get the. Yeah, that number's not in here, so what we're gonna have to do in order to get the number is do a little bit of math, so. I have, Indianapolis has 876,384. Times. Point 122 equals 100 and 106,900, and let's say 19, 106,919. So since this number is not in the. Not in the census, at the census site, you just multiply the total population times the percentage. And then that'll give you the population over 65. Okay, let's take a pause for a moment, why are we, why are we getting the. Why is one of our variables percent of people over 65 in terms of vulnerability to COVID-19, why is that? Why are we using that?
They're more susceptible to having worse complications.
Yeah, exactly, in fact, I was in a. Meeting specifically talking about COVID-19 risk in Tennessee. 87% of the COVID-19-related deaths in Tennessee were people 80, 65 years of age and over, 87%. Were people in that age rank, and in fact, the, on average, the death rate. For people 65 years of age and older from COVID-19 was 80%. So, yeah, that's why, so I think that. Once we. Have gotten that. Portion of the population vaccinated, that, I don't want to say things are gonna go back to normal. But the risk of the mortality is gonna go down significantly, once we get that segment of the population vaccinated, and then presumably. Look, we're not gonna get the death rate down to zero for anything, right? I mean, there's just, some people are going to unfortunately die, I mean, I personally have had more of my. People I know died of cancer in the last year than COVID-19, so people are gonna die of something. But in this case, the, the death rate for senior citizens was unacceptably high. Unacceptably high, and so that's why there were so many, you know, all the lockdowns, and all these extreme measures put in place, largely to protect them. So anyway, so that's why we look at that number. Okay, so our next variable. Is. The, something that we call the Social Vulnerability Index, and so we will. Go to that website. Hopefully. They cooperate. Okay, so this is the. This is the Centers for Disease Control Social Vulnerability Index, the. Original Social Vulnerability Index was created by a geographer named Dr. Susan Cutter. At the University of South Carolina, and so, and essentially, it's. It's a indicator of vulnerability based upon several variables, and this is vulnerability to anything. Weather events, pandemics. Whatever. So for instance, one of the indicators is poverty, so if we're talking about something like. Vulnerability to a storm event, how might people, how might being in poverty affect the person? Well, a person in poverty might not have a car, and might not be able to evacuate, so that's an indicator of vulnerability. Another indicator of vulnerability is a person who does not speak, does not have English as his or her first language. So given the fact that we are in a country where English is not the official language, but it is, it is not de jour, the official language, it is de facto. The official language, so what that means is that when we say de jour, that means by law, so de jour in Latin means by law, we don't have a de jour. Official language of the United States, when we say de facto, de facto in Latin means in practice, so in practice, English is the official language of the United States. It just, it just is, right, but it's not. A legal mandate as an official language, and so in any case, because we have a de jour official language of English in the United States. Persons who don't speak that language are gonna be at greater vulnerability to a variety of things, right? You know, so. The Social Vulnerability Index is comprised of 28 variables which can be modified. The Centers for Disease Control is using a modified version of the SOVI. Which is then. Included on this map, and so. Here's how we.
What did you, I'm sorry, Dr. Page, what did you press to the screen?
Oh, just now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went to this map, and just clicked right on this interactive, right on the interactive map, and so you have to be careful here. To use this map because. to uh use this map because it's um, anyway, you'll see.
What part of the project do we need this map for again?
Oh, it's um, so we're just going through the uh fields for the database. So we did the name, city name, population, population density. Uh, found latitude, longitude, population over sixty-five percent, population over sixty-five. Now we're at field H, which is the uh social vulnerability index field.
Okay, thank you.
And so okay, so I'm in Indianapolis, Indiana. And so again, at this, you have to be kind of, let me see, cuz in some cases, you're going to get essentially a county and not the city itself. See now, see, I've zoomed in too far. These are census tracks. You don't want that, right? So I'm gonna zoom out just until I get to the next layer. So the next layer looks like the county layer, that's fine, click on it. And then you'll get the SOVI score, um. Let's see, okay. So this is the social vulnerability index score. And they have all that same code. Um, so notice you even have here, it says it's a high level of vulnerability. Notice the, the uh color area symbol is, is a darker blue in the surrounding area. Uh, so you'll take that SOVI score. You can either, you, you take the SOVI score, in this case, it's point seven nine seven one. And so the closer that the social vulnerability index gets to one, the higher it is. So this is almost point eight in terms of vulnerability. Um, and so and so there, so you'll do that for each of your cities. So like I said, when you get to the map, if you, if you get, if you zoom in so far that you get down to census tracks, see, that's, that's in too far. You've got, you wanna be zoomed out to where you're looking at either cities or counties. And in this case, Indianapolis, if the county approximately takes up the whole city, that's fine, you know, we'll just use that, that number. So you have different layers here. So the social vulnerability index again is an indicator of vulnerability to a variety of things. Okay, field um J is black population, oh, no, wait, wait, wait. Field I is the uh city-county COVID nineteen risk index. So this is a, in uh, a risk variable specific to COVID nineteen. Uh, let's see, hopefully, all these links still work, never know. Let's see, oh, man, I knew it, okay. Geez, yes, for some reason, a lot, some of these links, once the pandemic kinda calmed down, people took some of this stuff down. Well, let's see if they just changed the URL. Maybe they just changed the URL, let's go to the room. Uh, my esteemed blogger, TV, seniors. Where is it? They took it down, they took it down. Oh, man. Let's see, resources, maybe it's under resources. Let me stop recording. Okay, just going back, um we found the percent black here in the census document, and then in terms of economy, we found the percent of people in poverty. Yeah, it's, it's trying to think for me. Okay, so, I mean, I guess this should be obvious. Why, why is the uh percent black a variable that is of interest?
Because um blacks are, I have a, um I'm sorry, what's the word? Yeah, we already have a disadvantage in most all areas. We're in the um lower part, I mean, we're in the part of society where it's like a vulnerability to diseases, poverty.
And, but specific to COVID nineteen, we know that, that African-Americans had, in some cases, substantially higher mortality rates, hospitalization rates, and so on and so forth. And some of that, of course, is related to um pre-existing conditions such as, you know, diabetes and other um pre-existing conditions that made us more susceptible. Um, poverty, that's, you know, that makes us vulnerable to anything, or anybody vulnerable to anything. Okay, so now we have the JV on COVID nineteen index, let's hope that site's still up. Yeah, uh, let's see. Okay, this one is up still. Um, so this is community vulnerability and vaccine prioritization map. See, we're looking at here. Oh, this map, this is a, oh, vaccine prioritization as well as community vulnerability. So let's see, we have here. And see Indianapolis. Too far. Okay, Marion County. So we're gonna get, in this case, we're gonna get qualitative data. And so here are the factors, income, education, employment, transportation, and so on and so forth. So in this case, we're gonna get a qualitative variable. In this case, it's medium risk for uh Indianapolis, Indiana. The next variable is the percent of the, of adults with asthma. Uh, I think every city should be there, so you're gonna, we're gonna have to go to T, the Tennessee State University site. Uh, TSU's website. And then access no, should be academics, libraries and media centers, whoops. And after you get the libraries and media centers, I think we should go to databases. Um, yeah. Databases, and then P should take us to policy map. And then, once we go to policy map, let's see, my log, I gotta sign in. Sign in with your, darn it. Let's get you, oh, for goodness sakes, what in the heck, what, what's going on here? All right, let me, um okay, so let's go, we should be able to just go right into policy maps and since we're subscribed, okay. Uh, let's see. Let me read my own instructions. Okay, so we're looking for percent of adults with asthma, I just have to remember where that is. Graphics. Health, should be under health. Let's see, health. COVID nineteen. Biostatistics, no, health conditions, chronic conditions, asthma. Subscribe. Let me go back to okay, so for asthma, we're going to have to use the um five hundred cities database. Uh, what I'll do is I will change away from policy map and update this uh today. So we'll just hold off on, on that piece of data, so we'll use the five hundred cities database. Uh, we'll have another working session for this assignment, um next week. And so we got through most of the variables, but um here are a couple of other places that you can look for data. Um, EPA's EnviroAtlas, EJ Screen, Mapper. Uh, we'll talk about some of these other uh resources perhaps next week. But you should at least have a significant portion of your attribute table filled out by next week. Of course, you'll enter, go get data for all four of your cities. Uh, and for now, we will hold off on the um this COVID nineteen risk index, I don't think we're gonna get that one, might have to, we'll keep, leave the table the same. Um, but, but I'll show you how to get percent adults with asthma by um next week. So like I said, this is the technical portion. Um, once we get the map up, the rest of it is just analysis. So we will have um uh, another working day with this and the other assignment to get through the technical piece. Um, and then we'll be able to move forward with the write-up after that. So I guess today is Thursday, and um, if there are no other questions, uh, we're done here. I'll post the schedule for next week before Monday. I'll try, I'm gonna try to get it done uh today or tomorrow, um. Probably should just sit here and get done now and not go anywhere. But if anyone, does anyone have any questions at this point? About anything, any of this? Okay.
Can you be no sir?
No, sir. No, sir.
So um, I guess I will see you all on Monday. Um, in the meantime, if you have any questions, um I'll let you all know when I update this assignment with the new source for asthma. Um, and that other COVID nineteen source, I don't think that's coming back. I'll check it again. Uh, maybe I just didn't, I was just in a hurry, didn't really take my time and look. Okay, this is a clo, this is a closing out third segment. Um, geography, forty-eight fifty, May Master, twenty-twenty-one, Tennessee State University. Thank you very much, and have a safe weekend.
You too, thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.